Row is absent Begley.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and take a seat. I'm going to skip remarks today since we're going to be doing a proclamation for Brad Ashford.
If we'd like to have the Ashford family come to the podium if they might, we are going to have a presentation on behalf of Brad. Councilmember Harding and I are going to read this proclamation together. We thought that would be a nice message to send. We both have a long history with Brad and the Ashford family, and so I'll first ask him to start with that, and then we'll have councilmembers have the opportunity to offer any remarks or reflections they may have too. And then if the family would like, we'll have you provide a few words at the end as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So whereas John Bradley Brad Ashford was born in Omaha on November 10th, 1949, graduated from Westside High School, received his BA from Colgate University, during which time he interned for US Senator Roman Ruska, and received his Juris Doctor from Creighton University before working as a staff attorney for the Federal Highway Administration, and then opening his own private practice. And whereas Brad served as an appointed public servant in numerous roles, including as a judge on the Nebraska Workers' Compensation Court, on the Board of the Omaha Housing Authority, including leading the organization from 2003 through 2006 as Executive Director, and overseeing the development of 300 public housing units, and as an original Board Member for the Metropolitan Entertainment and Convention Authority, helping to guide operations for the organization's management of the new convention center and arena. And whereas Brad was first elected to the Nebraska Legislature in 1986, and served as State Senator for 16 years, including eight as Chair of the Judiciary Committee, sponsoring legislation that included the Nebraska Convention Center Facility Financing Assistance Act, and turnback tax, benefiting areas with a high concentration of poverty, required background checks for handgun purchases, and utilizing COVID-19 relief funds to provide expanded mental health services at Nebraska Medicine, and collaborated with his colleagues to ensure that Jocelyn Castle remained in public hands as a historic landmark, and...
Whereas Brad was elected to Nebraska's 2nd Congressional District in the US House of Representatives in 2014, where he served on the Agricultural Committee and the Armed Services Committee, and was instrumental in passing legislation to create public-private partnerships necessary to building new healthcare facilities for veterans, ultimately resulting in the construction of the new outpatient clinic serving Omaha veterans. And whereas Brad was a passionate and dedicated public servant, who was tireless in his efforts to pass landmark legislation throughout his career, believed in working together to be a consistent voice for social justice, and was deeply committed to the idea that public officials could make people's lives better. Now therefore being resolved, the City of Omaha officially designates April 26, 2022, as Brad Ashford Day in the City of Omaha. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I may offer a few words, and then we'll see if others have lights on or want to speak. I'll start just by saying that Brad was a great friend of mine, a dedicated public servant, always did the right thing for our city and for our state. His service in public service was extraordinary over a period of decades. Ever since I started in public service, there was always Brad, and so I'll feel your loss also. He was a great mentor, very thoughtful, always sending short notes, or texts, or phone calls on issues we were facing, or thoughts we might have been having about things we were facing that day, or even just running into him in the park when he was doing his daily job. Same thing. He was always very thoughtful and always had something to say. He saw the great potential in bipartisan work and consentis building, and in public-private partnerships. I share that belief with him, and I always appreciated that with him, and I think we felt the same way. And then when I made the decision not to run for Congress in 2014, I was...
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for condolences, right, from the family, but was so pleased to see him do that because he was the right man at the right time, and was so pleased to see him be successful, and I think achieve what had been a lifelong ambition for him in that respect. And he certainly took advantage of it with all the accomplishments he had in just two years, not the least of which was the VA Hospital that we just talked about. What a great gift that he'll always be remembered for, for our veterans, but also throughout our entire community. And I would just say to you, the family, that thanks for sharing him with us, because that's what it takes when someone's in public service for that long. It takes a very understanding and supportive family, and please know that he'll be missed. I think all one had to do was see the massive turnout at the services over the weekend to know how many lives he's touched in our community, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. There's a lot of things that I can share about Brad, you know, in the arena of politics that you guys shared, your dad and your husband, for many years. Brad was a guy that just kept plowing forward, and you think of labels in politics, a rhino, a dino, all these things that people said about Brad or anybody in public service. And the things that I think of when I think of Brad, there are so many things that come to mind. Consensus builder, a problem solver, somebody that brings people together, always wanting to make things better for people. And I think in this day and age, more than ever, those are the things that I'll take. Your husband's and your dad's legacy guys will live with you forever. I know when my dad passed away on October 17, 2014, there's this great big guy in the back of St. Cecilia's Church waiting in line for 90 minutes to get up to pay respects to our family, and that's a guy that's running for Congress, but he never forgot his roots. He loved, my mom and dad were dear friends of his, and I know my dad, he voted before he died by ballot, and Brad just thought that was the greatest thing ever. And that's a legacy of Brad that I think people need to be involved in public service. It's a calling. You guys sacrifice him so he can make things better. And President Fesserson said, that ripple effect, Bobby Kennedy talks about that little ripple in the water, and Brad touched lives, each ripple, those lives touch others. And I can tell you through the Begley family, from Brad hiring my daughter Megan as an intern, she took the greatest joy in her life that this guy's a congressman and I get to go work for him, serving people. And I think that Jeff Katurba, as talented as he is, that was the most beautiful, here's Brad, that guy was going to, he was going to make a difference till the day he died. And Jeff Katurba capturing that, Brad running off in the sunset, there was nothing going to keep that guy down. So I wanted to thank you for sharing Brad with us and with the community. And the talks he and I had when I got into politics, nothing but positive, mentoring, helping, that I could try to be that little ripple because of Brad, that I'll take that with me forever, and I'm going to miss him, but I know the thoughts and things that he taught us. He'll be around with us forever, and I think it's important, if you don't mind, I'm going to read from what was on the program at the wake, and I think everybody should take heart to this. Brad's words are, "It is my wish that we push our common good qualities to the top, that those are the qualities that form the behaviors by which we conduct ourselves, that we always resort to our better selves in good times and bad." I'm going to keep that in my office with me. That's what Brad meant to me. My heart's with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this says it best, right, not just to be like Brad as an elected official, but to be like him as a human being. I remember, well, we all have stories of the first time we met Brad, not knowing him as long as a lot of my colleagues here, but it was at DJ's dugout, and it was five, four, five, maybe six years ago, and it was down Exarban Village, and he'd come running across the room, and I think he was in a full sprint, and he was just running over, and clothes were flying everywhere, and, "Hey, Vinny, you know that thing you guys are talking about next week? Here's what I think," and it's people like him that you listen to, that you respect. He's an icon in our city. He was an icon in our city. He will be missed, and I will definitely continue to pray for you and your family.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
And people would say, "Oh, that's just Brad."
Just get out of the way.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thanks. Yeah, I've known Brad for many, many years, and in fact, he was one of the first people when I decided to run for office for the first time, got right behind me and endorsed me, but it wasn't just one of those things where he actually cared. And what he said to me one time, he literally grabbed me by the arm and said, "Amy, you know that I do this because I truly care about people." And he says, "And I want to do a good job, and I think I'm doing a good job, and that's why I want to do it." And he was absolutely sincere. In fact, I don't like calling him a politician because it always has so much of a negative, but he was the most sincerest elected official that I have ever met. Because everything that came out of his mouth and that he did, he truly did it because his heart was in it. So even if you disagreed with him on an issue or two, you know what? You always knew that Brad was coming at it with the best of intentions, which is what makes him someone that we should always look up to, and that we should always strive to be as an elected official and as a person. Because he really did, you could just tell, it was just in him that he cared about what he was doing. And thank you for sharing your dad with me, and I know we go back, my dad, I think, worked with Ann for many, many years, way back at Valmont, which is how I got connected with the Ashford family before the law. So I just, I want to say that he'll be truly missed. I'm going to miss seeing him, and he was just always so complimentary, and he made you feel good about yourself because of the way he listened, and he talked to you. So I hope that I can learn something from that, and always keep that in mind, and hopefully, in just a little way, I can always remember that and emulate him in that way. And I would do that in his honor and your honor, so.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Truly, my heart just goes out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
So much has been made about Brad's kind of changing sides of the aisle from time to time. And so last week, when I learned of Brad's passing, I actually, I shared on Twitter part of a conversation I had with Brad, and I had remarked that the hardest part about going to his funeral was going to be deciding which side of the aisle to sit on. And he laughed. We laughed. But we also, we talked about many things that we had worked on together and apart, as well as those where we had been on opposite sides, but each of those conversations probably concluded with a resulting project that worked, and that was because he knew when to push, he knew when to sit back, he knew when to compromise, because he knew that together, great things could be accomplished. And that was kind of a resounding theme at the service on Saturday about togetherness and working in that way. And then I wanted to, I thought it was important. I'm glad Danny read part of what Brad's comments that were put in the program, but I'm also going to read some comments that Ann made that I thought were, that were very impactful, obviously. But before I do that, and this is why I didn't make comments at the beginning, I knew it'd take too much time, but, you know, the Ashford family and their roots in Omaha go back generations, and I might skip or add a generation or two, but I think it was his great-grandfather, Otto Swanson, who...
His grandfather.
Grandfather, okay, it was your great-grandfather. That's, I knew I would, okay.
My great-grandfather.
So, who started Nebraska Clothing, but also helped start the National Conference of Christians in Shoes. And so the point of that is that, you know, through the family and through the generations, that the importance of a public service and being involved, I think, is so deep-rooted. And kind of an interesting side note, too, I think the Nebraska Clothing Site was, when it was demolished in the early 70s, is actually the site of the W. Dale Clark, or in part, the W. Dale Clark Library, which is, again, showing the commitment of making that investment in Omaha and continuing to improve upon it, make it better. But, so I will close with, I'm going to try to get through this, Ann. These were Ann's words. He did it better than I can even do it. All right. I think we have seen Brad's fate played out among us all in a very public way. He was meant to be taken when he was, in the midst of so much work left to be done. He was needed. This bright shining light who also had human frailties, let me, I got to stop just for a second because it'll help me finish this. When you talk about human frailties, that was another thing that Brad taught me, and that's when you go to an ATM machine, and you put the card in, and it kicks out cash, you're supposed to take the cash before you leave and leave it in the machine.
You left a lot of cash.
Yeah. All right. I needed that. I needed that moment.
And a couple of gas pumps.
I'll start the sentence over. "He was needed. This bright shining light who also had human frailties was necessary to show us the same light can show within each of us if we just let it. At the very moment when Brad was strongest in his message of a new attitude of unity, of championing those whose voices others attempted to silence, his death is a loud crescendo, demanding that we listen and take to heart the lessons he has taught us."
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Hi. This message is for the Ashford family. One... I'm sorry, I'll repeat that. This is to the Ashford family. I just want to share sentiments from all of Omaha regarding your loss. Brad was definitely an asset to Omaha, Nebraska, and throughout the state of Nebraska. I also want to extend, the City of Omaha would like to extend our deepest sympathy for your loss.
Thank you.
And offer any prayers or any assistance that you may need in the days ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
On behalf of our family, I would like to thank all of you. He truly viewed you as the public servants that you all are. He always attributed to you the greatest of qualities of which you deserve. That you well remember his message because you carry it in you, and you will move us forward together. And we are grateful, I am especially grateful as a mother, for the legacy he left for our children and for generations left to come. So thank you very much.
And just briefly, I have the privilege of watching counsel most weeks now that I'm at the City Prosecutor's Office, and I'm always incredibly impressed of the bipartisanship that occurs in this chamber. We're obviously a split house, and members always treat members with respect, with courtesy. They can disagree without being disagreeable. We've gotten through some incredible things these last couple of years, and I am in awe of all of your service to our community. You know, I know my dad was too. I mean, this would be a place he'd feel very comfortable because, you know, he truly, truly loved the city, and it's in wonderful hands, and the Ashford family is incredibly thankful for all your sentiments. You're all friends of ours, and this will forever be remembered by us, so thank you.
Tom likes to stay.
This is Tom.
Madam Clerk.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the East 12th Legislative Chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We look forward to your testimony on the rest of our agenda items today. Please turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate.
Item 6, the resolution to approve the final plat for West Farm Replat 9 located southwest of 145th and Devonport Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 6 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 6 is approved, 6 to 0. Items 7 and 8 can be considered together for Meriwether Acres located at 1221 North 252nd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 7 and 8 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat.
Public hearing and vote on number 7 and 8 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Creason.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Douglas Creason, 10836 Old Mill Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant, this is Meriwethers here in the audience. We're supposed to obtain a permit from Douglas County Engineer for the driveway to the property that has been attained, and we're in the process of securing the floodplain development permit that's been submitted and is in review right now. So with that, we'd ask your approval today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Items 9 and 10 can be considered together for the Haven located southwest of 216th and Ford Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 9, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat. Item 10, a resolution to prove a waiver to the present development zone specifications of the urban development element of the City of Omaha master plan.
Public hearing and vote on items 9 and 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Eric Jovan, 11440 West Center Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant with me today is Brad Hike of TD2, the engineering company on this particular project. This is a 33-acre development at the southwest corner of 216th and Ford Street. There's 61 single-family lots, so we're just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Items 11 through 13 can be considered together for Jackson Tower Replat 1 located northwest of 27th Street and St. Mary's Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from R8 District to CBD District. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 13, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow large group living in the CBD District.
Public hearing and vote on items 11, 12, and 13 are today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant, along with myself. There are members from the development team and staff from the YES organization as well. I know I've been in front of you guys before with this project, so you are well aware of all that it provides and how exciting it is. I want to give a brief overview for anybody in the audience that isn't aware of this exciting project and this wonderful organization. We are here today to ask for a replat and a rezone for the area as outlined in the image up here on the screen. We are going to split that into two different lots, one being having the Jackson Tower, and the second would be the new YES facility. Currently on that lot, there is the Omaha Housing Authority Building as shown here. This has been vacant for many years. YES is coming in and revitalizing this building. Part of the services that YES provides is services and housing for homeless or near homeless youth. They have been running in the Omaha community for 47 years. Services they provide with this new facility, it'll provide emergency housing, maternity group home, and transitional living, housing a maximum of 56 youth at a time, allowing 56 of those youth to get off the streets. And they also provide career training, a street outreach where people can fill a backpack with food or toiletries, or just take a shower and get some of that extra support that they need to maybe get themselves back on their feet. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 14, a resolution to approve the amendment to the HDR Exarban Village Zone 6 Tax An increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located northeast of 67th and Francis Streets, an amount up to $1,236,586.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon, Virginia Hadley, City Planning. So I'd like to just refresh everyone's memory. So this is the HDR project of the Exarban Village Zone 6 property that was approved in 2016. So to orient people, West Center Road, this is 67th Street, 64th Avenue, Shirley, and the area that is shaded in blue represents the actual site of the HDR redevelopment project plan. And for those who may not know, of course, this was, this was a rendering from Google of the building, as well as the inner rail, which is to the east of it, so you can see a little bit there, and this is another view of the inner rail. So it's involved the HDR office tower, as well as some public improvements for the inner rail, and just to activate some of the public areas surrounding the building. So this amendment is for the purpose of adding additional public improvement. So what you see here, same blue project outline, what is in yellow, though, represents some of the areas that will have the additional public improvements. So those public improvements... So, those public improvements were previously contemplated. So, these additional ones that are being talked about in this amendment, they were previously contemplated, but were not finalized as the concept of the inner rail and other programming of areas surrounding the HDR Office Tower had yet to be tested. And just to note, some may say, well, I see some improvements in some of those areas. Those are temporary and they, they had been paid for by private dollars. So, again, this amendment is for major additional public improvements. The original TIF loan amount that was approved in 2016 under the original HDR Zone 6 TIF project was approximately 15 million. The amount of the TIF supported by the valuation of that same project was 16.2 million. With the success of the various public spaces in the inner rail, the request to increase the TIF loan by approximately 1.2 million represents TIF that was available under the original HDR Zone 6 TIF project and is supported by that original valuation. So, the remaining terms and conditions of the previously approved redevelopment agreement will remain unmodified and in full force and effect. This particular amendment was approved by the TIF Committee and Planning Board already. And I have a few pictures. Jay Noddle, owner representative, is also here to show better pictures. But I will just show that, so again, this is the HDR Tower Parking Garage. So, here's a, a much more, not modified, but improved dog park, complimentary, complimentary community garden, a greenhouse. There's a sand volleyball pit and there's a pickle ball that is proposed. So, those are just some of the improvements. Here's a rendering looking south and east. And then here is another rendering looking directly south. This, these improvements are public improvements, which is one of the very first reasons tax increment financing was approved by the community development law. So, it does comply with the master planning, community development law, and with that, I'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Mr. President, members of the council, city staff. I'm Jay Noddle with Noddle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. Bridgette did a great job, but I have some new pictures. And one of the things I wanted to say is, the reason we're here today is because when we started Zone 6 in Exarban Village, we really didn't know how far to take things. And frankly, we didn't know how the community would accept and embrace the public spaces. What we've learned over the last several years, even through the pandemic, is that the community really is using our public spaces. And they want more. They're asking us for more improvements. And so, because we have the capacity remaining in the original tax increment package, we've decided to do two things. We're going to take the area that is here. And we are no longer going to build a future building there. We are going to maintain this as public open space, privately owned public open space for a minimum of 25 years. And because we're doing that, we're going to improve and sort of make permanent the things that we've done in the past. And so, those include hard surfaces where we have gravel. It includes seasonal but permanent restrooms, an expanded dog park, and then covers, sort of canopy port-a-cachet type covers over two major areas. So, here, so Shirley Street is at the bottom, 67th Street is on the right. This area in here where people sit, listen to music, enjoy something to drink or something to eat, and don't have to buy their food or drinks, as long as they're non-alcoholic, from the vendors right in this area. They're welcome to bring a sack lunch if they want. So, there'll be a cover over this with some more permanent restrooms. Just gives you an idea of what this will be like. I think it'll create a really comfortable space. And then the inner rail itself is probably where the biggest improvement comes. This is a cover that can be opened and closed depending on the weather. It will allow us to extend the seasons. I must say, it's very expensive to do something like this. And so, we've taken our time to kind of think through what makes the most sense. And when we get done, there'll be a lot of areas where anyone can come and sit. It's dog friendly, it's pet friendly, there's music, music is free, lots and lots of programming on the weekends, starting, I believe, on the 7th of May and running through October. So, a lot of things to do and we think it'll be greatly appreciated and enhance the public experience in Exarban Village. So, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll make a motion to accept this. And Jay, I just wanted to, you don't have to come back up. But the dog park there, there's a lot of great things that are being improved here. And I can tell you, when I sit at Roast Coffee on an occasional Saturday or Sunday morning, there's a lot of people that enjoy that dog park. And I actually had a constituent, if you remember, that reached out to you that you had talked about the plans that are before us here today. So, I know there's a lot of dog lovers out there and that, the improvements that are going to be made and the enhancements in the inner rail and the dog park and these other places there, it's going to be a good thing. And the public will certainly enjoy it in Exarban there. Thanks.
I'll second. And also just add that I'm pleased to see that stay as well. Super popular area. Great to see the amenities stay for those that want to be outside or visit the inner rail. And I think it just goes to show that Omahans are willing to embrace unique public spaces like that when they're done well. And this one has been. No further lights? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, six to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve a special use permit application to allow small group living in R7 District located at 3423 Coming Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing, seeing none, any opponents? I have a couple of lights on. I'm not going to close public hearing, but I will recognize Councilmember Johnson.
The applicant for this here.
Oh, okay. Please come down. I was hoping you were. So, I'll recognize you as a proponent to speak on this item, right? Okay, go ahead. Name and address, please.
John Faulkner, 13007 Seward Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154.
Michelle Faulkner, 13007 Seward Street.
Okay. And it's Ms. Johnson's floor, so go ahead.
Thank you. How are you guys doing this afternoon?
We're doing good.
Just tell me a little bit about your facility, kind of be my eyes and ears as I walk through.
Okay, with the opening here, I was, my dad was, we're comp appellate judge. So, I was listening to the opening and I thought, man, all we're trying to do is help alcoholics and addicts recreate their lives. So, so our format is four AA meetings a week. And, and we, well, she, we just started a woman's house, so she does that. And, and we just manage that.
And so, how many individuals will you serve?
Eight. It's small group living disabled.
Okay. And will there be any security at all or any?
Yeah, we have, we have a live-in manager.
Okay, you have a live-in manager. And have you had any conversation with the neighbors nearby, neighborhood leaders?
Yeah, we sent out, we sent out letters, arrived before Christmas, got Christmas cookies, and, and nobody showed up.
Oh, nobody came?
Yeah.
Wow. Do you know who the neighborhood leader is?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you know who the neighborhood leader is?
I, I don't know if there's a neighborhood leader, but there was a, I can't, I think his name's Ed. And he lives kind of, I don't know, catty cornered back. When we were first remodeling it, he came by with some stuff and was very active in that community there. But we didn't have anybody stop by.
Oh, okay. And Ms., Ms. Melton, did you have a question for the applicant?
I think you live in my neighborhood, so.
Okay.
That I heard. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's really a great service that you're providing to the people in Omaha.
It's pretty cool. It's pretty cool.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I just heard you whispering down there. I just thought I'd give you an opportunity.
If you'd like to look, you can go to solutionsoboliving.org and, and it has some pictures of this house in particular and another house and our basic, you know, about the house and stuff like that description.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
I should, I would, I should have been more prepared. I probably should have brought something.
Yeah. But, but thank you. I appreciate your, your willingness to provide this much-needed service in the area. And if there's anything that I can do to help you, please give me a call.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't close the public hearing, so I'll do that now, but then I'll recognize Councilmember Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just looking through the, you can stay if you'd like.
Okay.
As a kid, I used to deliver the Sun paper and the World Herald, and that was on my paper route. I grew up two blocks from here. Used to slay right down Bemis Park.
Yeah.
On a toboggan that I probably shouldn't have, but in looking through the 12-page attachment on the beautiful, I haven't toured your, your house here, but it's beautiful. And, and the, the outreach to people that want to get sober from drug and alcohol addiction. And the work, I know there's never been any complaints in all the material that I read Sunday when I was in my office. And in society today where there's a lot of addiction and you're offering a service to people, I appreciate you doing that. And I absolutely will support this and wish you the best of luck. I hope you don't have anybody that needs help, but people do. And I know you'll get them through this beautiful home with the dozen or so pitchers you have. It's a beautiful facility for people to get back on the path to wellness and their mental health and, and to cure the, the terrible demons of addictive disease. So, I'll absolutely support this and thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion? Motion in second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, six to zero. Item 16, to consider a classy liquor license for El Costilla Lounge located at 1802 Vinton Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, I'm Domingo Rangel here for the liquor license.
Okay. I could just, your name and address a little louder for us?
Sorry, Domingo Rangel. And the, my address is 2208 South 10th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68108.
Thank you. Here to answer questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 16?
I'd like to speak. Sorry. Emily Anderson, 1717 Vinton Street, Omaha, 68108. I'm here in support of the new lounge with the caveat that the noise does not become an issue. There's an establishment across the street and a few doors down that recently received a liquor license. They are under the understanding that the liquor license allows them to make as much noise as they want until 2:00 a.m. blasting music late at night. The Omaha Police have backed them up on this. They have said that they cannot do anything about the noise coming from this business. They do not give tickets for this. I want to use this as an opportunity to talk about this as a larger issue in Omaha. Vinton Street is Zoned NBD with an MCE overlay. This effectively means that it's a mixed-use district that was developed 100 years ago, which means that people can live directly next to commercial uses. The, the municipal code specifically says uses are permitted in the NBD district, which preserve the scale and integrity of such districts. In addition, mixed uses are encouraged by such districts. This neighborhood demonstrates many of the characteristics that Omaha, after many years of separating uses, has been trying to encourage in new development. It is a dense, walkable street with people living directly adjacent to commercial uses. This is not an unimportant issue as it affects the quality of life in regard to the uses of commercial use directly adjacent to people living in the neighborhood.
So, I understand the point you're making, but I want to make sure you stay on topic to the liquor license, which is this agenda item.
Right. So, my point is that we're trying to encourage this type of development in Omaha, but there doesn't seem to be an understanding of what this means in terms of people living directly next to commercial uses, right? So, this has been done historically for hundreds of years, hundreds of years. And now we're trying to do that again in mixed-use districts, like some of the developments that you've seen up here today. But there isn't a very clear ordinance about noise issues. And it doesn't seem to be enforceable because the police will not give out tickets for this because they do not know how to enforce it because it says something about a decibel limit. So, what I'm saying is that there's an issue now and I support this establishment going in. I'm happy to see it, you know, that what was the River City Saloon is going to be filled again with a lounge. That's great. But I would ask that, that the noise be kept down and that in order to, that effectively that noise is not able to be heard outside of the establishment, outside of the storefront. Because in fact, right now, there is no other way to enforce it. At least that's what my understanding from the Omaha Police Department is. That's it.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 16? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Yes, ma'am. Can I, I apologize. I didn't catch your name when you first said it.
Emily Anderson.
Ms. Anderson, are you, is your complaint against the establishment that they're replacing or is there a different one?
No, there's multiple businesses on that street where it is an issue. I'm just asking.
Right, I know. So, I have, the reason I'm asking this.
It's not directly for this business. No.
Okay. Are they, are they places that have, that sell liquor?
Yes, there's a place across the street.
So, what I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask our chief of staff, Mr. Douding, would you mind? Because I don't, we don't need to talk about a different establishment. But if you would just take a moment, Mr. Douding, I would like you to provide the name of the liquor establishments that have the noise issue. And the reason I'm asking is, as Chair of the Law Committee, if there are problem liquor establishments, sometimes what we do is we'll just call the owners in, have a discussion with them and talk to them about maybe the noise that is going on in the neighborhood, how they're disturbing the neighbors, and maybe ask them to do things that would combat that. So, we have another way outside here today because we're here, we're here on this liquor license. And I'm, I'm going to guess that, that this new owner is going to come up and tell us that she's not going to be part of the problem. So, if you don't mind just taking a moment, we can, I want to get that information from you. I don't think it needs to be public record because it's not on our agenda. But I think Mr. Douding will get maybe your name and then the name of the establishments, and maybe we can touch base.
Okay. I, I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
We'll do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Preliminary, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Anderson, appreciate you being here. But we are here for the liquor license. If Ms. Rangel could come back up, please. Couple of questions for you. And you got to give your name and address again.
Oh, Domingo Rangel, 2208 South 10th Street.
So, let me just say to, to those that are here, I know you're already a small business owner, very successful, dedicated and invested to the neighborhood. There's no doubt in my mind that you will run this operation like you do your other small business, which will be a plus to the neighborhood. We don't have the diversity amongst businesses along Vinton Street like we could have. People ask me all the time, how can we make Vinton Street better? Well, this is a way. But to sort of answer the questions, do you have any intent of having loud music?
No, and so, my, I have two older sons who will be running the place mostly since I do have my other business. So, I need it to be as friendly and I want it, you know, we're a sports family, TVs, watch a game. We're going to have keynote. Pretty much as friendly as it could be since I will have my children there, so. For me, I just want it, a comfortable place for people to go have a drink after work and, you know, relax or watch a game or.
Well, you, you met one of your neighbors there and there's more to get around to see. So, make sure you make it a point to, to say hi to all of them, and I would make a motion to approve this license.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, six to zero. Item 17, to consider a class C liquor license for Omaha Prime located at 415 South 11th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Steve Bell, co-owner of Omaha Prime at 415 South 11th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting us to be here. My name is Jennifer Zhang, the co-owner of Omaha Prime.
Same address?
Oh, the address is 415 South 11th Street.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll make a motion to approve this, and just so you guys know, this is inside baseball, but my district boundary changed a little bit, but you're still in my district. So I will make a motion to support this and wish you the best of luck. Thank you. Thank you.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 18, to consider a class I liquor license for Dry Bar Omaha located at 120 Regency Parkway, Suite 100.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, I'm Melissa Hegarty, the owner of Dry Bar Omaha. So I'm taking over the location. In Regency, what it is, is a wash-dry style bar. So we're not actually a bar. It's just a hair salon that we're taking over. I think Amy's familiar with it, Brinker. I'm in your district. I'm here to answer any questions. My address is 9802 Ascot Drive, Omaha, 68114.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
For the record, I want to make sure people know I'm not a customer.
I was going to ask, but I decided not to.
We approve.
Two for one special, maybe. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, six to zero. Item 19, to consider a class IK liquor license for Texas Roadhouse located at 520 North 155th Plaza.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents, please. The first one we have by Zoom, Rebecca Wonka. We'll get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Just want to give your name and address, please.
Rebecca Wonka, 2820 Chelsea Meadow Way, La Grange, Kentucky, 40031.
Great. Here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 20, to consider a liquor license addition application for Main Street Cellar located at 2714 North Main Street to add an outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 is today. Proponents, please. We also have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Ford. We'll get you off mute. Try that.
Yep, Jeff Ford, 4407 North 195th Circle. Just here to answer any questions you may have about Main Street Sellers.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion by Harding, second by Melton, right? Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 21, to consider a liquor license addition application for Night Owl located at 3902 Farnham Street to add an outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the Council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. This is just a small patio on the south side facing Farnham.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Motion to approve this and give my best to Katie and Noah. I wish them the best of luck up in Blackstone tonight out there. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on agenda items number 22 and 23 were held on April 12th. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number 24 through 55 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Oh, please come up.
Marty Hosking, 7510 Cass Street and owner of 104 South 37th Street, number four in Blackstone area with regard to consent agenda resolution number 24202-0388 regarding an operating lottery services that will be there by Bob and Willie's Bowl. So I'm opposed to this, that neighborhood. I'm opposed to gambling in general, and I think a lot of people, I think a lot of people would agree with me, but I don't think a lot of people have time to come down here. I'm a real estate agent, so I can kind of adjust my schedule to get here. But I want to speak for, I'm sure, a lot of people in the neighborhood. At least I very much ask you to do some real research on this before we do a really quick granting of this because gambling by its very nature in that neighborhood would not be complimentary to the kind of growth I think that would be healthy for the city. And I might present myself later after there's opportunity for more public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony on items 24 through 55 today? We'll close the public hearing. I'll second. Before I call the vote, I do want to engage Mr. Fanslaw just on number 46 a little bit. We had a conversation about this at pre-council. This item would approve the pedestrian and bike master plan study that we've been advocating here at the city, and I'm fully in support of that. This agenda item, I think, is a result of maybe some increased costs we didn't anticipate and a cost share with MAPPA, but I wanted to make sure we had that correctly and then identify the timeline. We expect this to be completed on the record.
Sure, yeah. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. You are correct. It's an amendment to the MOU. The scoping came in higher than we anticipated, so MAPPA's contribution is $200,000. Ours was initially $50,000. It's being increased to $118,000. It's coming out of the CIP Complete Streets program for funding. And we're a little late starting. We waited on the state for some approvals. Now that we have that approval, we have an internal meeting with city staff, planning, public works, and the consultant next Friday. And like we talked this morning, we're hoping nine months, but no longer than a year.
Thank you.
You bet.
And presumably a public engagement starting in May on the plan to be developed?
Correct.
I would encourage that, and I also would encourage it to be done in nine months if possible.
That's our hope as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick comment on number 55, which is the slate for the charter study, the Charter Convention Study Committee. I just wanted to wish all the, those that are being appointed to this board well, and we look forward to hearing some good solutions or maybe good recommendations to consider for amendments to our charter.
Thank you. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Picking up on my friend colleague, Councilmember Harding on item 55, that I was reading the bios on the folks on there, and the mayor picked John Fox from my district, who I think was an outstanding pick. And I know Councilman Harding's been through this process before, I believe intimately involved. So I know going forward, I'll look to hear a lot of good things that come out of this and the great minds of the people that are on this board and see what can come out of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a comment on 25. It's for a Keno license for Azul Sports Bar. I did receive some opposition, and I just wanted to make clear and on the record that this will not turn into a Keno satellite. It will not become the next La Vista, Ralston, Papillion, Keno. It is simply a place where you can show up and play Keno, maybe stay a little longer. But it won't be like described in the opposition as a full Keno place where extra exits and entrances will be needed. I am aware that there is a new high school going in, but I am positive that it falls outside of this where it would be allowed. Otherwise, they would not be on our agenda to be approved. And I'm fully aware of the schools in this area. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights. There's been a motion in a second. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 56, a resolution to approve the wireline crossing agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company.
Public hearing and vote on number 56 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. I think Epstein.
Epstein.
Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Johnson Epstein's. Item 57, a resolution to approve the 2021 Tax Increment Financing Annual Report.
Public hearing and vote on number 57 is today. We'll start with proponents in a presentation by Ms. Hadley from the Planning Department.
Good afternoon again. Bridgette Hadley, City of Omaha Planning Department. I guess that's as far as it goes. I first want to approach this by giving a brief introduction to the purpose of the TIF program, give a few highlights about the entire TIF portfolio, highlights about some of the 2021 activities, and then conclude with some comments. You will hear me talk about some figures, mostly valuations, tax revenues. These figures indicate the effectiveness of the TIF program and tax increment financing to enhance the tax base and in addition to provide housing, jobs, and all the other types of economic activities that we expect when we are redeveloping our communities. So the Tax Increment Financing, also known as TIF, program allows for the City of Omaha to engage in private partnerships to encourage private investments in areas that have experienced disinvestment, areas in need of housing, areas in need of neighborhood revitalization, and areas with historic properties that can be repurposed, as a few examples. TIF also helps to sustain neighborhood communities' economic base and of course spur development. TIF is a financing tool used to incentivize the private sector to invest in areas and projects that align with the city's goals, as well as the city's master plan and various redevelopment plans. In that regard, TIF is a leveraging tool that is used to attract private sector investment into these particular areas, which makes leverage very important when the city is using TIF. And that leverage has been used, as I said, to leverage jobs, private investment, business investment, housing, and so forth. So this investment by the private sector partnering with the city's TIF program achieves revitalization in our neighborhood communities, including our central business district, which has accomplished community and economic development throughout Omaha. So a few highlights of the entire TIF portfolio. There are 254 TIF projects that we currently have. And as we, when we look at the values as of January this year, and again, these values are going to speak to TIF's ability to be effective in increasing values on those properties throughout our CRAs in Omaha. So as of January 1, 2022, those 204 active TIFs produced 898% increase in valuation over their base value. So their base value is $14.5 million, meaning that's the value of the properties when they were first beginning. And now the assessed value is $2.1 billion in assessed valuation, so huge increase, 898% increase. The TIF dollars invested in those active TIF projects represents $459 million in TIF loans, and that has produced $3.7 billion in projects that have been invested in throughout Omaha. The TIF loans represent approximately 12% of the capital stack, or also known as the total project investment. So our TIF that we have approved, that City Council has approved, mayor has executed on those projects, has resulted in TIF only representing about 12% of the funding source. And what that means is that the city is attracting $8 of other funding, mostly private sector funding, for every $1 of TIF that is invested. So it's pretty good leverage, and it's been about a leverage of eight, a factor of eight for several years. So that's where we've been. So now just to touch on the table. Get into the report. Page 11 of the report. This table speaks to how well the active TIF's current value approximates what the project owner originally anticipated the values to be. So this table, here's, this column represents the values of each of those projects that, a cumulative total, and the year represents basically the year those started. So these are the oldest projects when they started. The project owners anticipated in totality that those values would be about 81, almost 82 million in value and so forth down the line. So the older projects are here, newer projects are here. As of January 1, these are the current values of these projects. So the state law requires that we report certain information, and this is one of the main pieces of information that they wanted us to report, just again to look at comparing, how well are these values comparing to what the current value is? And so from a cumulative standpoint, so these are the cumulative totals of the initial projected and the cumulative total of the current value. So you can see there's a difference of almost $500 million or so. So, and that's about a, it's basically saying that these projects, these 254 active projects, are only achieving 79% of the initial projected value. So of all of these projects, active projects, it was anticipated the assessed value, current value would be about 2.7 billion, excuse me. Well, they're only about 2.1. So that's all this is really telling you. The larger the percentage in terms of difference means that those values are getting closer to, meaning the initial projected values are getting closer to what the current value is. And of course, the current values are set by the Douglas County Assessor's Office. And there are a lot of factors that go into what the valuation is. We know with real estate, because we are talking properties, real estate location is key. So where those properties are, some areas may see higher valuations than others. So where those properties are, some areas may see higher valuations than others. What I call some of our hot areas are in our midtown area, particularly Blackstone, and maybe even some in downtown, you may see higher valuations than you might see in other areas of the City of Omaha. So levy rates, local, regional, and national economic conditions all play into what those values are, in addition to them being set by the Douglas County Assessor's Office. So now I'll move to highlights of the TIF program for 2021. Here is a map. This is Exhibit A at the back of the TIF report. And it's just to illustrate the various locations of these TIF projects. So here's eastern part of Omaha. This is 72nd. And then this dot represents Elkhorn. So these projects that were approved, the 25, are throughout Omaha. So 25 projects approved. And when we say approved, what that means is the redevelopment project plan was approved and the agreement was approved. And after they're approved, then the construction starts, it's completed, the county assesses that value, and then the TIF is generated, meaning the new tax value is generated, new tax liability that is paid in as tax revenues. The 25 projects that were approved, they represent $41 million in TIF loans, which produced 361 million in total project investments for 2021. The types of projects approved range from mixed-use housing as well as commercial. And the housing includes single-family owner-occupied units as well as rental units. Blighted areas, the first, in order for anyone to apply for TIF, we have to designate these areas as CRAs, Community Redevelopment Areas. And so the community development law asks us to track what percentage of the city's total acres are blighted or in a CRA. And as of last year, we have 18.5% of the city's total acres that are in a CRA or that are blighted. And the law says the maximum for a city our size can be 35%. So we're, we've got a ways to go. I would also note that approximately 53% of Omaha's CRAs are extremely blighted. And extremely blighted is a, another designation that came about a couple of years ago. And they have to be in a CRA. So 53% sounds like a lot, but it's only, those extremely blighted areas are only going to be contained in a CRA. And there are no limits, meaning the law doesn't say you can't have, or that you're limited to a certain percent of the CRAs that are extremely blighted. So moving to affordable housing, just wanted to pull out that particular piece of information of all the types of projects that were approved and the number of housing projects. So in 2021, over 600 affordable low-income housing units out of a total of 982 housing units were proposed through TIF. 78% of those 600 are using LI-Tech, or Low Income Housing Tax Credits, in addition to TIF. So a good number of our projects, TIF projects that were approved with, that were low-income housing and affordable, were combined with low-income housing tax credits. And just for comparison, last year, the number of affordable housing units that were proposed were only 84. So a huge difference in 2021. So now moving to the paid TIF projects, or TIF projects that are matured, have reached their 15-year TIF term. In 2021, there were 13. Jump to that. So there were 13. I'm sorry, you can't see that. There we go. 13 different TIF projects that paid off or reached their 15-year term. So every year, we're approving new TIF projects, and every year, projects are being paid off or reaching their maturity. So there's, there's this cycle of new projects coming on and other projects that are paying off. Those that are paying off, going off their TIF term, those tax revenues that were diverted to help offset the cost of those, of the projects themselves, now are coming back into the taxing jurisdictions. So that's, that's the cycle. So by the end of the 15-year term, those 13 that you see here in this report, 13 projects had basis assessed values of approximately 14.5 million. And they increased by approximately 101 million dollars in valuation, assessed valuation. And this represents approximately 699% increase over the base. Those same 13 projects generated 323,000 in property tax revenues on the base, but are now generating an additional approximately 2.3 million in property tax revenues now that the 15-year term is ended. That's also an approximately 699% increase. This just gives me an opportunity to quickly to show this. I've talked about it a lot in the past. It's in our TIF program documents. It's on our website. This is a basic TIF model that you will find across the country. Many municipalities will use this basic model. And what it shows you is tax revenues, the tip, the term of the TIF, tax revenues that are generated, and valuation. So essentially, if I talk about these 13 TIF projects, when I said the 323,000 in property tax revenues on the base, what I'm talking about is this here in the green area. So when the project is approved and they start construction, the base value is frozen. And that is such that, so that the values on those projects before the TIF starts, before the construction starts, is frozen, and those revenues for those projects continues to flow to the taxing jurisdictions. And that's what this green represents in, from the beginning of the term to the end of the term, continue to flow, so the taxing jurisdictions aren't missing any dollars that they would have received. However, this turquoise blue area represents the new value that is generated by these TIF projects. And it, and it, it's important to note that when we say it's new value that's generated, this gets to that but for. If that project had not been proposed, this blue area that you see, which is significant, would not be there. So in, when I talk about those 13 projects, I said, but are now generating an additional approximately 2.3 million in property tax revenues now that the TIF term is ended. What, that's what this is representing. This is the beginning of the term, when they're starting construction. Construction is moving. This is probably about year two. There's partial valuation. Now there's full assessed valuation. And as the years go by through the term, valuations will fluctuate, but the hope is they'll continue to increase. And so that's what this represents until the end of the term. At the end of the term, all those taxes, the base, plus this, the TIF, which is the newly generated tax revenue, those all now flow to the taxing jurisdiction. So again, the benefit of, of approving TIF. So someone might ask, well, what if TIF was not involved on those properties? Well, a simple what-if analysis was conducted by our, my staff, by, by me. And on page 15 of the report, essentially kind of demonstrates what would have happened. If I can get to my notes quickly. So what we did is we, we, I worked with the finance department to say, okay, if, if there were no TIF projects on these same 13 projects, what has the historic increase in valuation been for the last, for the same term that these projects were TIF projects? So using those, those values, we came up with that those properties with no TIF, or maybe a little bit of redevelopment, would have only increased in valuation and tax revenues by about 34%. And what that results in is property valuation increases would have been nearly 5 million versus the actual of 110 million. And property tax revenues that would have been generated of approximately 112,000 versus the actual of 2.3 million. So in conclusion, the, the choice to approve TIF projects often results in a much higher, much larger increase in the tax base, which benefits the city, the county, and other taxing jurisdictions, as well as citizens, because of everything that comes with the TIF projects. Because these projects are helping to fulfill the city's master plan, various redevelopment plans, and city goals for community economic development and economic development, the TIF projects help to make Omaha a better place to live through housing provision, work through business and investment and jobs, play through dining and entertainment venues and options that we now have much more of, choices of in Omaha because of these TIF That basically concludes my report. I will just say I have added in, on the bottom of page three of the report, because there are a lot of questions, as we know, about how TIF works. So if you go to the bottom of page three of the report, number two, it says the City of Omaha primarily utilizes developer-financed TIF. So I explained that a little bit more in detail, and I'll leave that in future reports for the public to refer back to if they really want to understand TIF. I've also, there's information on our TIF website that is available to the public. We're trying to make more available. There's a PowerPoint 101 that can help people understand TIF as well. More information and tools will be added. So again, we want transparency so that the public understands how TIF works. And I'm always available to talk to, make a meet, have a meeting with, and I know Don is also available as well. So with that, I am here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for providing that overview of the 2021 summary. And also, as you note, this is a public document on our agenda today and also on the Planning Department's website. With that, I'll move to other proponents today for number 57. Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. In general, I'm against TIF the way it's been explained. I may not be against any particular project, but I don't think it's been explained near well enough to the citizens of Omaha. And this is one reason, like today, we have just two people here talking about TIF. And how many projects did we see talked about? We hear about the valuations, but we don't hear about the valuations for the people that live in those areas whose taxes and valuations have skyrocketed because of it. I'm not the only person that's been against these projects for quite a while. Our, our friend Doug Kagan that used to sit there has been down here a number of times talking about it. He had issue papers about it. So I'm not the only one that's negative. But there are other negative comments about the laws down the state legislature that are changing these things. But I can't believe that, that these are the only two developers in Omaha. I walked in earlier this morning, I thought you were talking about TIF, and I thought you were making policy, but you were probably talking about this discussion. But I talked with an older gentleman the other day that lived just across the street from the crossroads. And I remember just a while back, there was something in these documents that said, oh, we're going to blight some more, do some more to the houses across the street, to the west and to the north. But it didn't specify which houses. I asked him if he was aware that maybe his particular neighborhood or on his side of Cass Street, I guess it is, do you know if it's been blighted or not? Have you looked it up on the city council? What are you talking about? Citizens don't know what this is. They think it's private developers spending their own money. It's not the case. I think you need a lot more transparency about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. There has been a lot of discussion in the public regarding TIF, what that is, how is it beneficial, and all kinds of things. And just a couple of months ago, or a few months back, I asked for a rundown on the total amount of projects that were allocated to TIF. And so today, I really appreciate the Planning Department, Director Fanslow, with your leadership. You were able to provide this rundown that I had requested a few months back. And then I would also like to applaud Bridgette for, for providing the, the information that you provided today. That's really helpful, and I would certainly encourage you to continue to provide that information that you said that you would do on the city planning website. So again, I just wanted to say thank you for the information that you provided today.
Kudos, as Councilmember Bagley would say. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you. Bridgette, I want to thank you because you've been providing this information on an annual basis. I do believe it's required by law. But the presentation that you started, I want to say probably five, five years ago, I mean, really putting it in this kind of format that you've been doing every year for us, and we do it at this time every year. So thank you for the extra work that you put into it. I don't think it could be any more transparent, and I don't think you could be any more helpful than you have been to the public by willing to give TIF 101, sitting down individually with members of the community, which I think you even sat down with Doug Kagan, that was, that was mentioned before, or have made the offer. Because what we see here, and this is what I wanted, what you called attention to, is there's an additional $2.2 million that are going straight into the taxing jurisdictions this year. And at least 50% of that, if I look at the majority of these projects, they are typically, I mean, other than your occasional Elkhorn project, most of them are in Omaha Public School District. So half of that, it's an additional $1 million basically, that's going to fund Omaha Public Schools. So when we, when we talk about this, this is what I like to see. It's on that back end, and Mr. Naughtle just happens to be sitting here. I think numbers 11 and 12, Mr. Naughtle, it looks like there was a million, you had property at about a million dollars, and the value's gone up to $19 million. So thank you for that investment, and we're glad to see that you're going to be contributing quite a bit of extra taxes to the City of Omaha, the schools, and the other taxing jurisdictions. And it's also noted a lot that we have been doing a lot more housing projects. And I know some of the opponents always note, well, I think we have too many apartments, and they're just going to fail, so you should deny these. And so I see here, we have the St. Clair condos, Brandeis lofts, Jackson lofts, Benson Park Plaza. And I believe, I think some of those, Mr. Naughtle, that are on here, I'm just not clear, some of those are housing units as well from what, from on here. So quite a few additional projects that are all housing. So they haven't gone under. Again, these loans are paid for and the, by the developers, and the developers take all the risk, not the taxpayers of Omaha. So although we take no risk, we do reap the benefit. So thank you. Thank you again for sharing again this annual report that we get every year, Bridgette, and thank you for every year. You, you provide all the detail that, that we've asked for. And I've actually used your prior reports. Mr. Harding and I actually did a slideshow for, for a group, and we were using your reports from last year in order to make that slideshow. So thank you for that. We, we do utilize those more than just today.
Thank you. And I would agree with those comments, too. We had an in-depth presentation on this at the Planning Committee this morning as well, and we do monitor this very closely. And as I mentioned, and as Ms. Hadley mentioned, we encourage folks to look at this document, both on our agenda item today, but also publicly listed on the Planning Department's website, to look at it in depth as well. And some of the things that stuck out to me this time were over 600 units of affordable housing. That's a large increase from 2020, and that's good news. In addition to the 699% increase in base revenues that were, that's been discussed, and the what-if proposal, another way of describing that, the and the what-if proposal, another way of describing that, the but-for proposal, which is very important to any TIF analysis, which is without these projects, you only anticipate at about a 34% increase in valuation, and here we have 699%. So those, those products are paying off on the backend. And I've also noted that in that report is also a description of all the TIF applications that were not approved. So there are many that were applied for but not approved by the Planning Department, and we don't even see those. So I think that's important for folks to know, too, and to analyze. Seeing that, there's no further lights. Is there a motion? To approve. Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Claire Moe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 57 is approved, six to zero. Item 58, a resolution to approve the construction management at-risk delivery system for the downtown branch library and library central distribution facility.
Public hearing and vote on number 58 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Anderson.
Mr. President, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Omaha Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street, Suite 300. Item number 58 on your agenda is a resolution approving the use of the construction management at-risk delivery system as it relates specifically to the tenant improvements for the downtown branch library and the central distribution facility located at 84th and Frederick. So the construction manager at-risk delivery system is not new to the industry, maybe not entirely new to the state and to political subdivisions of the state. It is a little bit new to the City of Omaha. Historically, the City of Omaha has used what we call a design-to-build process for public projects. That's, that's going through a design phase. Once the design of the project is complete, then there's a bidding phase for construction, and then there's the build phase. So it's a very linear process. So the two alternative delivery methods are what they call a design-build and a construction manager at-risk. What it does is it onboards through the, the process of a request for proposal, or letter of qualification, or letter of interest, or statement of qualification, onboard either a design team or a construction management team earlier on in the process to help control costs, to help control issues with procurement, with design concept or design strategies, knowing and understanding perhaps what options are available for, for equipment or for contractors. And so a couple of years ago, the state enacted some legislation. Specifically, it's the Political Subdivision Construction Alternatives Act. Originally, it was enacted for school districts. School districts were the first political subdivisions to really take advantage of it. That has since been amended and broadened. Now, political subdivisions of metropolitan class, primary class, first class across the state are all participating in it. So we've seen folks like Sarpy County, folks like Retna, all across the state are starting to introduce and starting to utilize the design-build and the construction-manager-at-risk delivery system. So under that Political Subdivision Construction Alternative Act, whenever a political subdivision wants to use this delivery system, the first step is to adopt a resolution. That's item number 58 here before you. This simply says, "We, as the city, want to pursue the use of a construction manager at-risk delivery system for this particular project and only this project." The next item on the agenda, I won't be the spoiler, adopts the policies of how that goes through. We can get into that here in just a minute. But this specifically authorizes the use of the city to pursue the use of construction manager at-risk processes for this particular project. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 58? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Noddle, or actually, I was going to, sorry, Troy. I just, I wanted to, we talked a little bit about this at pre-council today. I just wanted to have, have kind of the outlook as to, you know, how this is used in the private sector and the efficiencies therefore of, and why it's a good tool for the city to adopt, while at the same time making sure all, you know, issues of transparency are still adhered to.
Jay Noddle, 2285 South 67th Street, in Exarban Village. We're big fans of this kind of a procurement and structural mechanism. As Mr. Anderson said, it, it brings the construction manager contractor onboard earlier in the process. It is, that is done following normal city procurement, or would be done following normal city procurement policies. So it's very transparent. There's a half a dozen ways you can go out and request information or proposals, and each project's different, so you would pick that, pick what's most appropriate for that project. In, in the private sector, more directly to answer your question, we like it a lot because it, it gets the general contractor, construction manager onboard early. It gets a guaranteed maximum price sooner, and it shifts the risk to the construction manager, general contractor, more of the risk, and it shifts it sooner in the process than it would otherwise. So you have a number you can count on as your GMP earlier than you otherwise would. And it's, it's good protection, and it's, I think it's a very smart move, and it will be different for all different types of projects. So my understanding is there would be a resolution similar to this for each project that the city is considering, irrespective of what type of construction or what type of project it is.
Thank you. And I think to the, to comment on the last part, too, I think we had some discussions, at least in the smaller group that, that we had the briefings on, that maybe we do this by project, at least in the initial first couple of projects, to, to make sure that it's working successfully and as, as we anticipate it would, maybe before making a blanket recommendation for, for that process going forward. So with that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
This motion in a second. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Hi, these questions are for Troy. If I could get you to come up, please. I just have a few more questions. How does this comply with the state public competitive bidding process?
So the state competitive bidding process, if I'm not mistaken, I might have to go back and double-check. I believe that the state competing bid is a requirement of the Political Subdivision Construction Alternative Act. So later on in the act, it specifies that any political subdivision that participates in this process has to comply with that Competitive Bidding Act, which is a separate section of. I'm not an attorney, so I might have to defer on that question, but if I'm not mistaken, I believe it specifically calls that out in the act.
Mac Cussey Law Department. I'm not trying to punt or anything, but I'm not as familiar with this statute or aspect of the law as Mr. Anderson is. I'm not trying to like push it back on him, but I'm not your man for this. I can get Ms. Taylor down here if you'd find that helpful.
I find that helpful.
Okay, I'll text her right now.
Thank you. And then why, why are these changes, why are we proposing these changes? Can you explain why now? Why are we doing this now? What is the reason, the rationale for this change?
So as I maybe alluded to in my introductory comments, this is a delivery model. This is a delivery system that provides for a much, much more expeditious delivery timeline, as well as providing those cost controls. And then thirdly, I would say shifting risk. Yes, this is, this is something that the city has somewhat debated for a couple of years ago. In fact, the first draft of the policies, the next item on the agenda, was done back in 2017, if I'm not mistaken. The legislature has evolved since 2017 and has created much more, in fact, not only is there the political subdivision, but there's also a Transportation Innovation Act that also addressed an identical process. This act lays out where political subdivisions can use it for, whereas the Transportation Innovation Act lays out a number of alternatives. And so really, across the state, across the nation, these two delivery models are becoming much more popular for all the benefits associated with reducing the timeline, onboarding the contractors and the design teams earlier on in the process, controlling costs, those guaranteed maximum, and shifting risk. The traditional design-bid-build is not something we're going to necessarily get away from either, right? It's, it's a traditional tried and true. There's a lot of controls that the city can engage with, with the design-bid-build process, which is, which is what we're all familiar with, which is what we use. And we'll continue to use that on, on projects that are appropriate. Specifically, the reason, one of the reasons why we're, is as we relocate the library, time is of the essence, right? We're trying to be expeditious in that relocation. So rather than going through an entire design phase and then taking those construction documents out to bid, and then finding a contractor, that's a very lengthy, linear process. This is a more dynamic, everybody's onboard, the teams are onboard early on in the process. We can identify challenges early on in the process, get contractors onsite so that when building permits are approved and the design plans are approved, there's already a construction team onsite ready to deliver.
Okay. This is not for you, but I know when I first came onboard as city council, there was some discussion about electronic bidding, making that available as a great tool for contractors. How close are we at getting that electronic billing into place? And I know that's not related to this subject at hand, but while we're talking about this process, I thought this was, would be the appropriate time to ask, how close are we at getting that electronic bidding?
That's a great question, and I am probably not the person to be asking that question. I might have to try. I think Bob Stuvia, maybe, under his...
Eliza.
Eliza. City Attorney. Somebody else?
Mac Cussey Law Department. The short answer, which I guess won't really be short, is it's in the works. The purchasing department is working on bids for the software to do it. So it's working its way towards completion, but as of today, it's not going to be ready to go. But the purchasing department is still working on it and working with the law department on it as well.
Having a technology background, when folks are given projects to do, they are given timelines as to when they're going to complete their scope of work. So I would like an answer as to when that's going to be, because again, that was being talked about when I first came onboard, and that's almost a year now. So if, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I, I do need to know when, because when they got the project, someone should have identified what that timeline looked like. I'm going back to that competitive process, construction management of risk. Will there be a committee formed for this?
Yes, the committee...
And before you answer that question, my colleague has some questions that is far more important than my question. So I'm going to yield the floor to her and then come back. Ms. Melton, do you have some questions?
No. Okay. Other than I was just stating that that's in the next agenda.
Okay. And I'm not smart enough to know that. You can go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, a selection committee will be formed and will be responsible for evaluating proposals. It is the next item on the agenda when, so the first, this, this item is adoption of the resolution, pursue the process. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to adopt the policies. Specifically, Section 5 of those policies lays out, and I'll just read, Section 5D, once RFP responses are submitted, there's generally a 30-day window from the time there's an advertisement to the time that those responses are due. RFP responses will then be referred to a selection committee. The selection committee shall be a group of at least five persons designated by the political subdivision. Members of the selection committee shall include, it lays out the criteria for that and how those members are then convened. And, and in response to, you'd asked a question earlier today at pre-council about that committee. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and submit some documents to be circulated.
Thank you.
So I know that you and I had a conversation this afternoon. After pre-council, I went back, kind of put together maybe a, a first draft. We had a conversation. So this is version, what I'll call 2.0, that shows two council representatives to be named, to be determined. Council president identifies those two council representatives. The first iteration kind of identified councilman for the district and the council chair for the committee that represents libraries. But again, that, that's entirely up to council president to decide which two council representatives. So there was the, the third member went back, had a conversation with some folks. Suggestion was perhaps Keith Station with the mayor's office. Keith Station is our deputy chief of staff for diversity and inclusion. Might be a good representative to serve on that committee. Rachel Steiner, somebody from the library, somebody that has the expertise in the library administration, whether it's Laura Marlane, the director, or whether it's Rachel Steiner, the assistant director, both. Now, Rachel Steiner was involved in the selection committee of the owner's rep and was also involved in the selection committee for the design team. So that would seem to make sense. But again, if it's Laura Marlane or somebody else from OPL administration, that's, we're entirely indifferent to that. Just somebody probably that has the expertise in and around libraries. The next individual, Mike Eastman. Mike Eastman, contract administration manager for Public Works Department. Mike Eastman is probably on every single selection. In fact, Mike Eastman is oftentimes involved in, in every procurement selection committee because a lot of those go through the Public Works Department. I know he was involved in the Fifth Police Precinct project. He was involved in Station 31 and every other city project. So Mike Eastman's probably a, a good recommendation. The next name on the list, we, we talked about, it'd make sense to have somebody from the owner's rep, from Noddle Companies. Jewel Rogers is a great addition to the Noddle team, could provide some incredible input and perspective to that selection committee. And then obviously, the last name, Michael Howe. Mike Howe is a citizen. There's a citizen requirement, the last one, 5D5, a resident of the city. Mike Howe often serves as sort of the city representative. There's, if I'm not mistaken, there's three citizen representatives that sort of go through a rotational schedule. They're on the Public Works sort of list of citizens who, and so Mike Howe was involved in the, in the selection committee for the owner's rep. He was also involved. So, but again, this is, this is just a draft. This is certainly open to suggestion. It was just a response to your request this morning of how could, what would that selection committee look like? And I, I'll conclude at that.
Well, during our pre-council meeting this morning, if we're going to recap what we talked about this morning, we talked about three city council members being a part of this committee, and now we're talking two. So help me understand how we went from three to two. Between 10:30 a.m. and, and 2:00 p.m. today, we went from three city council representatives to two. Help me understand that.
I apologize. I did not catch the three council. The, the policies state that you can have as many council, but you can't exceed three. But it's somewhere between one and somewhere between three. Could be one, if you're wanting a small selection committee. Two... Two, we talked a little bit, two, again, we talked about council district representing, who represents both 1401 Jones and 84th and Frederick, having a council district representative. And then having somebody who is the chair of the library committee, that would be done. But again, if, if council wants to put three on there, I, I don't have any objection to that. We just expand the group to include more members to create an odd number. Excuse me, I'm going to sneeze here.
So this, this, um, what we're voting on right now is a preview of what we're going to do for future projects, correct?
So this, I, I would call this resolution a beta test. Yes, I would say that this resolution is, is the beta test to show that, and demonstrate that this is a tool that the city could and should, could and should continue to use for other projects. This specific resolution only approves this delivery system for the tenant improvements, for the downtown branch, and for the central library. These are the only two tenant improvements. This is the only project that this resolution authorizes the construction manager risk delivery system for. But yes, we fully anticipate to come back with other resolutions in the future for other city-related projects as that's appropriate.
So this beta test, should I vote yes for it? Let's say tomorrow, there would be a project that we decide to use this. Then we, would we decide on one city council rep at that, would use for that project? Or would we decide two? Or would we decide three? How would we, I mean, what road would we take?
So I would say every project is probably going to be unique and different and demand a, a certain level of involvement and stakeholder involvement and, and expertise. There, there's, the vote on this item just is the, the next item is the policies. There's no real vote, there's no real, it's just an internal, we, we really have sort of 30 days to kind of put our head around, because once the proposals get, go out, once it's advertised, you have 30 days for the, we don't have to put a selection team together until the end of those, that RFP deadline. So we have 30 days to negotiate, is it one, is it two, is it three? I mean, we're flexible, we're, we're open to the input and the, and the suggestions from council. Again, the policy specifically suggests that the council representatives are named by the council. I don't want to keep putting you on the spot or throwing you in. But really, it comes from the council president. We're flexible. We need to have an odd number. So if it's one, we can do five. If it's two, grow to seven, three, grow to, grow to nine. I mean, we can put together whatever selection committee would want, and, and it can deviate from project to project.
So your selection team, does that include a diverse selection team? Because I was given a list of names that said that for this next project, or the first one, would be council member Bagley, council member Rowe, Keith Station, someone with the last name Steiner. If I'm reading the handwriting correct, Desmond, Jewel Rogers, and Mike Howe, H.O.W.E.
It's just a sample, it's just a sample. When you asked me this morning, what would that selection committee look like?
Uh huh.
This is a sample. There's no vote, there's no council approval. It's just a mutually agreeable, hey, these are the folks should be at the table.
Okay, I guess...
This is just a sample of what that, that diverse selection committee could look like, yes.
So when we're making these selection teams, are we're, are we're committed, is the city of Omaha committed to having a diverse team at the table? The reason why I'm asking is because about approximately two years ago, we had a lot of civil unrest here in Omaha, Nebraska. And there were a number of Fortune 500 companies that said that they were going to make diversity a number one priority in how they conducted business. And I would think that the city of Omaha should be leading that effort in every decision that is made. And when we're looking at these selection teams, and I'm not seeing a diverse team, then my eyebrow is up, not only mine's, but also constituents, residents, people in Omaha as a whole are looking at what diversity looks like. So I'm concerned about that. So I'm, that's why I'm asking all these questions. Because when you move one piece on the chessboard, unfortunately, it has a domino effect. It does have an effect, because once you've moved one piece, the other piece falls down as well. So you cannot say that we can only deal with item number 58 and not be concerned about 59, because they are related. So that's why I'm having this conversation about 59. So it's, I, I understand the difference between 58 and 59. However, there are external factors such as this team, selection team, that plays a huge part in whether or not 58 should be voted up or down. So we want to make that clear.
Absolutely. No, I think that in response to your question, I would say that the city is absolutely dedicated to creating diverse committees, boards, commissions, having representation, stakeholder, community input. I would, and I think the mayor's office has taken great strides in doing that. I think each of the departments have taken great strides in doing that. Again, from 10:30 this morning until today, right? I wasn't really prepared to kind of package a selection committee together. So we, we have time, right? I mean, we got 30, and if that takes the input, I'm certainly, the mayor, that we're certainly willing to work with everybody involved to, to put together a diverse selection committee with the expertise necessary to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. Absolutely, I would think that everybody would be on board with that.
Okay. My concern stimulates from a couple of weeks ago when we had a streetcar board selection that does not, it does not reflect the makeup of people that will be riding or being serviced by that streetcar. So I, I want it on record that we are committed to being relevant in terms of making sure that there is diversity in our decisions that we make going forward.
Absolutely.
I believe the citizens of Omaha deserve this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I would hope Ms. Taylor is here, if you want to ask her that question you were going to ask.
Yeah, Ms. Taylor, thank you, thank you. Troy, thank you for getting the information that I needed. My question was, how does the, how does this comply with the state public competitive bidding process?
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. First of all, the resolutions before you and the policies that are before you both comply with the Political Subdivision Construction Alternatives Acts, which is a state act. So the authorization for the city to enter into and to utilize this type of contract delivery system is specifically authorized by the state legislature. That act in section 13-2909 also requires that as part of this process, the city publish the RFP in a newspaper of general circulation for 30 days prior to accepting proposals. So what it specifically says is that the political subdivision, which is the city, shall prepare a request for proposals for this contract delivery system at least 30 days prior to the deadline for receiving and opening proposals. The notice of request for proposals shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation. So we do comply with the public notice, public bidding process. The state act also requires that the city, when it publishes notice of that RFP, that that RFP contain a, a number of different, very specific items, including the scope of the contract, the bond requirements, general information about the project, the criteria for the evaluation and selection of proposals, and any other, any other information that we think is necessary or relevant for someone to adequately and appropriately respond.
And so since this is a new process, new concept to Omaha that we're adapting, should we vote on this? How will we educate? What are the plans to educate the public that we're doing this?
Well, again, I think we notify the request for proposals that have to go into the newspaper. So, and like we do with every other kind of RFP that we issue for public processes, public projects, we put that information out there, there is contact information that's here at the city. We are available to answer questions. We have a full packet of information. In that respect, this project will be published, noticed, and proposals will be requested in the same manner that we do every other single public project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thanks. And I just wanted to note, in part of 59 that was attached to our agenda that we got on Thursday, on page four, under D, it hasn't changed from this morning, because as of this morning, I thought there was just one council member. That's what we talked about at 10:30, and that's what was in, that's what's attached to agenda item number 59, is that there would be one council member. And I, my opinion, I'm just offering my opinion, is because we'll have different projects, typically in different areas, that in order to not have someone be favored or not favored, or, you know, to have the mayor, I would just suggest to the council president that it should be somebody whose district it falls in. Obviously, it's not going to be me in, in this project, or probably a lot of the future projects. It just seems to me when we, you're looking at fairness and, and that kind of thing, picking where, the area where the council member represents would be great. Then I actually would look at, depending on the project, this is a library, so I would look at potentially the chair of the library committee. If it's Public Works, potentially the chair of the Public Works Committee. If it's Parks, maybe chair of the Parks Committee. Again, when I make that recommendation, it's not self-serving. Since I chair the law committee, I probably won't be selected for that either. But to me, that kind of makes sense if we, what I like to do when you have processes is come up with processes that just kind of make sense. And then you're not discounting somebody for their gender or race, or choosing somebody because of that. You're actually picking people who have kind of the experience or the connection with the community being their elected representative. So that, that's going to be my, my recommendation. And I also find when you have committees and they tend to get too big, because again, this is a selection committee for the RFP. So which, by the way, the city does like on a daily basis. The Public Works does on a daily basis. They look at them, they try and pick the lowest and best bid. This isn't any different. This is literally just picking the designer and contractor at the same time instead of individually. So they're not going over the project, they're not doing anything else. It's selecting the designer builder. So I just want to, I just wanted to clarify what it actually was, because it's kind of, it, it's not done any differently than any other projects. I just pulled up the state statute, which requires the same RFP process that any other projects have pursuant to that statute under, it's chapter 13, and it starts in 132907 on the RFP process. So it seems to mirror the same process we use. We're just picking two instead of one. So I like it, especially whenever we're saving, saving some time. And sometimes when you save time and you get that price, sometimes you can save some money too. So that's always good for the taxpayer and for the citizens' goal. And I think there was a motion in the sec...
There was, there was a motion to second to approve. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Um, yeah, I just want to reiterate the city's commitment to having diversity in all walks of life and all the processes that we do. I just want to reiterate that. And I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, the citizens of Omaha need to be represented in all phases that we do business, period. Just because we may not have a lawyer that, if all of our lawyers are white, and that seems to be the skill set that we need, we, we, we don't just simply ignore the fact that we don't have a diverse group of people here. So however, however we want to figure that out, we, we should make every effort that we can to make diversity. Because if, if, if everyone is looking the same, there's no way that people can adequately articulate and state the needs of someone that is from Sudanese, someone from Asian, Asia. There's no way that those individuals can do that because they don't have the background. So we, we, we have to do that if we want to see a different look and a different approach in what we're doing here in Omaha. Especially when we're, we just two, three weeks ago voted on urban core, where we're saying that we have a commitment to bring in new talent. New talent will not look like the same race of people. It will be a diverse population. So we may as well just start incorporating that now rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just conclude, I think, the remarks on this item, because there's no further lights. Troy, if you would, just a couple of other things. I, I agree with many of the remarks that are being made today. And I think what we have is a good conversation about our new process that we haven't done before. So it's good to have that discussion, a discussion in pub, in public about how this is going to work going forward. And it's a bit of a work in progress, because this is the first time we're proposing to use this. And I understand the potential cost benefits. I do think diversity is an important point to be made and that that should be included and thought of as we go about selecting contracts this way. Along those lines, in our initial discussion about this, we discussed the Small Emerging Business Program too, which is very important in that respect. And should this new process be adopted, all those goals and guidelines are still something that must be abided by and would be sought after, right? To include companies both tier one and tier two in areas of poverty and subcontracture, what have you, correct?
Correct. In fact, if I'll, if I may, subsection 5E7, this is the selection committee shall meet, evaluate, and rank all proposals using the rating criteria and weighting set forth. So this is the, the rating criteria and the weighting, if you'll notice number seven. There's a weighting, there's a rating associated with any other information bearing upon the selection, including but not limited to the design builder or construction manager's performance and compliance with the city's Small and Emerging Business Program. So yes, there, as an RFP is submitted, as that information is provided, those respondents get additional ranking, weighting as they can demonstrate and show that they're wanting, willing, and able to participate in the Small and Emerging Business Program, yes.
Good. And in this particular item, which is specific to the libraries, the projects downtown and then the 84th and Frederick renovation, the selection committee was selects than those firms. But those firms, and in fact, everything else related to the project, still comes back to the full city council, right?
Correct. The selection committee will, much like our, our other processes, will make a recommendation on who the city should enter into a contract with to be the construction manager. So, and at that point, we, I've really kind of seen it two ways, right? That initial contract, depending on where the design set is, and when I say that is, let's say if design plans are at 30%. Obviously, a construction manager is not going to probably give you a GMP at a 30% design set. Now what that contractor will be able to do is come in and help the design team understand what, what mechanical, electrical, plant, whatever the project may be, what's available, maybe there's a change in the, the scope of work, knowing what talent is out, what workforce is out there, what subcontracts are available, what procurement options are, and then so they, as they work through the process, you'll get to probably a 60, 90% phase of the design plans. If a contract has already been entered into by the city council without a GMP, then you'll come back with an amendment that says, yes, okay, as the general contractor now, I'm willing to do this project for this guaranteed maximum price. I've also seen, if the design sets are further along in the process... I've also, if the design sets are further along in the process, as part of that RFP, you might see GMP, guaranteed maximum prices, coming in with that first round. But yes, the selection committee is just saying, hey, look, based on the proposals we received, we think this is lowest best, this is most qualified, however they want to rate that score. And then that contract comes back to city council for approval.
Okay, thanks. And then this also being the first time we're doing this, I think it's a good question to ask. Well, how do these committees come together? What's the intention around that? And so, we had that conversation this morning, and we also had that, that conversation with the mayor before this meeting. And so, she forwarded some names who she thought she might want to have on the selection committee. And I do think it would make sense to have, in this particular case, as pertains to these two library projects, the council member from that district, because both projects are in that district, and potentially the chair of the library committee, that makes sense to me. But all is flexible, as you say, and doesn't need to be decided until 30 days prior to any resolution being approved, right?
Correct.
And then lastly, I would just observe, the one thing, another thing that I think is positive about this is currently, there's no council member involved in selections of these kind, right?
That's correct.
So, this kind of new way of doing things, get the council member, or up to three council members, involved much earlier in the process, and involved in some, what I'm sure would be some major projects in the city, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I like that about it, too. All right, thank you. There's no further lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
This is a public hearing, right?
It was already closed. It's a roll call.
Begley. Harding. Johnson. Milton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 58 is approved, six to zero.
Next item, please.
Item 59, a resolution to approve the policies for the design build contract or construction management at risk contract.
Public hearing and vote on number 59 is today. Proponents, please.
Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, City of Omaha Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Streets, Wee 300. Okay, so the previous item was the resolution that approved the city's selection pursuit of a construction manager at risk delivery system for the two tenant improvements. This item adopts the policies. I know we've already kind of debated those, so I won't belabor that, although I am available to answer any questions on those policies. With that being said, I'm open to answering any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents on number 59? Seeing none, any opponents?
Laris Dorf, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm sorry, folks, but it sounded to me like you were talking for the last almost hour on number 59. I thought you were on 58.
And that was the public hearing that was open and closed.
Okay, now, I'd like to say something. You didn't interrupt, Ms. Johnson.
Why would I do that? The floor is hers as a council member.
As I sat and listened to this, and this is, this is a hearing now, I get to talk.
There, you may testify as an opponent to number 59.
I get to talk, please, thank you.
You're an opponent to number 59, and have it be appropriate.
I brought up an issue this morning.
In, in appropriate way.
Okay, meetings, I want to bring it up again, and you're doing it to me again. Actually, you should probably be the one that is escorted out. Because this is my time at the microphone, sir.
You have a-
I am talking on 59, I'm opposed it.
Okay.
I think you guys had some discussions here that said that you indeed were formulating some policy yesterday, I mean, this morning, or you are now, but you wouldn't let me talk this morning.
That was not a public-
While you guys were forming policy.
I would suggest you use your time wisely.
And you did not lock the doors for a closed meeting, under the old Meetings Act, you can do that.
There was no violation-
If you give notice, but you did not give notice, sir.
Or you're going to be escorted out again.
You didn't lock the doors, you didn't have a notice up there. You put it in here as a public meeting, and you are violating it again, as well as my First Amendment rights.
You've been remarkably patient. It's all your testimony, Larry. We appreciate your testimony, especially when it refers to an item on the agenda, which that does not. Any other opponents today?
Louis Humannis, 2709 Dewey Avenue. For what? I also live here.
Have him identify himself, who he writes for.
I write for myself, Mr. President. I just want to point out that, that this is very important to a lot of people that use the downtown, that are using the downtown library. I've used it, and I do want to follow the process. And I don't think that just having a public, public notice on a newspaper for some documents is, is conducive to that. Just, if you, if that's all you're doing, you're going to have a gap analogy. The community needs to continually engage this process so that we're confident that the outcome isn't going to negate things that are accessible currently. That would be my, my biggest concern by creating a new sys, library system, is that you're going to lose things. I hope that the developers and all the people responsible for the completion of the project come up with something that's, that is integ, that integrates new technologies, new, new ways to use the library. It's got to be an improvement. That's what is billed as an improvement. But we, we should be aware of the decisions as they are being made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number 59? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I waited about my questions on 59 till 59, so here we are. Ms. Taylor, if you could come on up, please. We know who you are, but-
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department.
Thank you. So, looking through 59, the only thing I have a question about, obviously, both of these are designed around different delivery methods. And if, if we really are going to get serious about the, the time commitment, the cost, about keeping them low, as it was brought up earlier, as we move forward within the city for projects, we are going to have to get serious about electronic bidding. Otherwise, we're just not going to save any money. Regardless of the delivery methods of 58 and 59 that you move forward, or previous practices, it's just not going to happen. And some of the other problems we see with not having a bidding system is those who show up before us and protest, because maybe they weren't allowed to bid. They were the lowest but not selected. Maybe they didn't click a box, or put a at or each in a column. And so, on this, and I apologize, because you might not have a copy, but it's, it's number three, under Design Build Contracts. You know what? And I take that back. It's number, it's under three, but it's, it's letter B. And I'll, I'll go on with my question. And it's, it's about the LOI that's submitted. So, what we have later on, I think in five, is the, oh, I see how that looks. That means you already have an answer. That's good. So, later, we see in number five where the committee is established, regardless of who that is, regardless of what the project is. And, and so, my question is, in here, it clearly states, the LOIs, the letter of interest submitted by the design builders that are incomplete, or do not comply with the requirements contained in the, the documents, will be rejected. And then it goes on to say, the selection committee constituted in section five of these policies will review the letters and select candidates or, or design builders, or what you have moving forward. So, my, my question is, I don't believe the bidding process would apply to an LOI, but how do you have four or five people maybe want to be considered for whatever project it is around the city, but we have a, representatives or staff that are the ones making the decisions to basically what it says here, reject the documents that we have? How do you go about make that a fair process? And what would constitute the requirements contained inside these documents to be rejected?
In the event Mr. Anderson has a detailed answer, I will let him do that. But what I would suggest is that it says very clearly what has to be contained in the letter of interest, the deadlines and the procedures for submitting the saying, how they're advertised. So, I, I think it's probably, it should be very clear within that letter of interest, what needs to be completed. So, I, I, without knowing specifically what the concern might be, I, these letters of interest for these types of contracts are not going to involve missing a checked box. This is not quite the same as I would think that you'd look at, like, maybe a lawn mowing contract or something like that. These are a little bit more detailed. So, Mr. Anderson, is there something that you could supplement my answer with?
Mr. Anderson, please.
So, part of the way to answer that might be to kind of understand how these two processes and how these two delivery methods deviate from the design bid build that we're all accustomed to, right? So, the design bid build process that we're all accustomed, the design goes through the process, right? There, there's, we know at 100 percent what the project looks like. So, at that point in time, all the contractor is doing is bidding on the project, right? When, when there's a design build, or when there's a construction manager at risk, we don't know what the project looks like yet, right? I mean, there, there's no way to put a number on the project until the plans are closer to completion, right? So, okay, so now I'm going to explain a little bit, the enabling legislation, right? The Political Subdivision Construction Alternatives Act, right? It was written in such a way where it combined both processes. It said, in the first couple of sections, we hereby enact the following, okay? And then the next section was the design builder process. It was the design builder process that laid out the letter of intent subsection. So, under the state statute, if we pursue a design build delivery method, which is different than construction manager at risk, if we pursue the design build, we have to take an extra step, and we have to seek letters of interest, or what's also known in the industry as statement of qualifications. So, I'm going to refer, I hate to kind of do this sometimes, but there's a great example. The Nebraska Design and Construction Industry Council put out a great product specifically on these two, the Nebraska Political Subdivision Construction Alternatives Act and the Transportation Act. But it lays out, here's what a sample letter of interest form looks like, and here's all the criteria. Now, if, if a respondent submits a letter that says, well, first of all, let me, if they don't submit the letter by the deadline, I mean, those are pretty obvious, right? That they're not, they're not going to open it, they're just going to send it back and say, hey, look, we, we didn't receive your proposal by the deadline. Those are, those are pretty easy to view. Once you open it up and you start looking through it, the, the advertisement will lay out exactly what has to be included in the letter of interest. Show us your qualifications, right? Well, if a contractor has no experience, no qualifications, chances are, they probably won't be rejected. Chances are, they probably just won't score very well, right? It's really in our best interest to evaluate and, and to gather as much interest in these LOIs as possible, because at the end of the day, we're dealing with taxpayer dollars, and, and so, it's in our best interest to really try and take a look at these. But it's not a hard bid, like you would see in the design bid build process. There's no project yet. In fact, what we're doing is, in the design build and in the letter of interest process, we're trying to seek the most qualified, or, or whatever criteria is laid out in the advertisement that says, hey, we want you, we're going to build a space station, I don't know. Show us what kind of experience you have in building space stations, or why should we consider you, right? It's kind of that type of response. One company is going to have exponential experience, and maybe somebody else doesn't. It's up to the selection committee to kind of determine whether or not. Now, in that design build process, just because you may not have the experience, doesn't necessarily disqualify you, okay? So, the next section of the enabling legislation says, the selection committee narrows the list down to, I think it says, three candidates, right? So, it's only those three candidates that are design builders who participated in the letter of interest process, who will be able to participate in the RFQ, actual request for, RFP, request for proposals. That's design build. We're not doing that. It's just the construction manager at risk that we're talking about today. Now, we blended both of those into one set of policies, because that's what the statute did, right? So, we blended it into one. So, all we're really dealing with right today is the construction manager at risk process, which according to the enable, doesn't require that additional step of the letter of interest statement of qualifications, what they call prequalification for participation in the RFP process. We're going straight to RFP. And to respond to maybe some of the comments, again, it's in our best interest to try and solicit as many proposals as possible, right? We don't, we don't want to rule anybody out. So, while at a minimum, we're abiding by the state regulations for advertising, the notice paper, publication, on and so forth, we're also going to try to push out as much word of mouth, or however you want to say it, to try to get as many responses as, it, it's in our best interest to try and get as many proposals as possible, put all of those before the selection committee, and let the selection committee evaluate those. So, it's a little, I kind of had to explain that. I know that's a long-winded answer. But the, the letter of interest process is only if the city selects a design build delivery system. We're trying to do the construction manager, which doesn't require. We could do it if we wanted to, but it's an additional layer of protection, because you are hiring both the design team and the build team at one time. Where in this case, we already have a design team, you already proved the, the approval for the contract of the design team, now we're bringing that contractor on board. It's a little bit different.
Okay. So, with that being said, we do get three interested parties. Say two already do work for the city. One can build a skyscraper, and one can build a light rail. But those two LOIs do not include experience. But the third one, Joe's Construction, has a detailed list of experience that they have to bid this project. What do you do?
So, the selection committee, again, would take all, okay, so I'm going to step over here. We're talking about the design build process right now, right? Because we're talking a letter of interest, prequalification, which is what you're describing. That's not a step that we take in the construction manager at risk delivery model, okay? So, under that scenario, there's two solicitations. The first solicitation is an advertisement that says, submit letters of int, should, submit your statement of qualifications. This is the process you're talking, right? That selection committee goes through all of those, and they might find, hey, look, this contractor doesn't have experience in X, but does have a lot of experience in small and emerging business, or construction in a similar. That selection committee could then say, contractor one, yes, contractor two, yes, and this contractor three, yes. Those three can now participate in the request for proposal process, which then goes through another 30-day iteration of, we're going to advertise, we're going to solicit requests for proposals. But those requests for proposals, the only people that are allowed to participate in that process are the three that the selection committee already prequalified to participate. Does that make sense?
Yes. And then, so the seven and number five would be the determining body to move forward, the design build phase of that, based on whoever, whatever district, whatever project, because again, if, if we're talking, this is what we have for this particular project, because it involves the library, but you could have other people involved, you could have other council members involved, but you're asking them to take their knowledge, their skill set, and determine, based on what you just said, on who would move forward with the project. What if they don't have that experience out of these seven? How do, how do you get that?
You're talking about the selection committee- You're talking about the selection committee members.
The selection committee members that are making this decision to move forward both of these delivery methods we have. And I'm only asking this because I, I see this as a stumbling point for people in the city that would like to, this has changed, right?
Sure.
So this has changed for people, so it's difficult. And there are businesses and companies out there who now are going to be interested or maybe feel they have a different shot, but if it's same of the, if it's some of the same ways we go about business, it doesn't seem it's different. And, and, and I certainly don't think that we're taking serious the part about achieving cost savings. So I understand what you're saying, but I have also sat here for five years and asked about a certain easy, money-saving way that the city can move forward, and it doesn't quite work that way. So we have people show up and they protest. And I want to make sure, based on what I'm reading here, that we're about to approve or not approve, that we don't have that happen again. Where, where a company is upset that this recommending body decided, based on what their skill set is, that these people, they didn't comply and, and the documents got rejected. So that's my point. You don't have to answer, I'm just letting you know where I come from, sitting in this seat and knowing that we have problems. And so, and so when I see these come before us and we talk about, let's get serious, we're not getting serious until we actually fix the problems we already have in the city, and that's electronic bidding. Because as we move forward with projects, and since everybody else was out of the agenda realm they were in, I'll get out of mine, there's only one way we're going to pay for streetcar, and that's the development along it. And if, if we don't take the, the lowest and best bidder, based on we not having this system in place, it's not going to work as a city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
I think my colleague, Mr. Palermo, kind of stole my thunder. I'll cancel.
Okay. Motion and second, no further lights, roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty-nine is approved, six to zero. Non-action items, items sixty through eighty-seven do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Your motion to adjourn. Second, roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero, meeting is adjourned at four thirty-two.